Good morning, everybody. This is our Friday morning COVID check-in. And I'll start like I usually do by reading the district's vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners. Who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. And our order of business this evening, this morning is our open session call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. There'll be time for public comment. And administrative items include this morning, the COVID-19 update, COVID-19 policies, E, B, C, F, D. COVID travel policy for students, E, B, C, F, E, COVID travel policy for employees, E, E, A, A, student transportation. Phases, models of learning, status of athletics, and then we will adjourn. So I will take the roll call and ask if all are okay with the plans for this morning. Paul Kendall?
Here and yes, just one note though, at least we hadn't recommended any changes for the for the employee travel policy.
Okay. And Kathy Bates? Did you make it back?
She's not in yet.
Not yet. Mark Terry?
You're in, yes.
Aaron Williams?
I don't see.
Okay, well, we do have a quorum, so we can move forward with the meeting. So I will ask first if there is anybody here who would like to offer a public comment. Can I see a hand, Minette?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. I'll start with you. If you could just introduce yourself and let us know. Want us to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time each Friday morning to do this very challenging work. My name is Minette Schiffman. I am a parent of two current Ashland High School students. And my daughter Madeline Klepper is on the varsity volleyball team and I am her parent. And she's a senior. And so as I've written to many of you guys on the call this morning. I also serve on the COVID team for our public school district in Framingham. So I'm really well aware of the challenges that you guys are have been facing throughout this year and the incredible amount of hours that you guys are putting into your days. So I didn't think, you know, I really thought hard about coming to this. And I think that in our district, we struggle all the time with whether we are making an easy answer of no, because it just it's just easier and it seems like it makes sense. Or we're really thinking about the science and the decisions. And I know you guys are doing that too. Um, to not allow parent spectators in an indoor arena really made sense in the winter. And I understood that I had a basketball player at that time. And I understood that and I didn't come before you. Our numbers are different now. We can open the doors to the gymnasium and we only have 15 parents per team. And I think that we could pretty easily socially distance parent couples from other parent couples. That gymnasium is very large and there will be no families from the other team coming. And other schools are doing this. I mean, we watched the Westwood game on Tuesday and the the Sands had parents in them. Which only makes the heartache harder for me. So I would really like to encourage you to rethink that decision.
Thank you. Anybody else? We did get several letters expressing the same concerns, just you may be aware of that, but you're not alone in your request.
We have a virtual hand up.
Where's that?
Kelly. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, hi, thank you. I just wanted, my name's Kelly Politica. I'll keep this quick. I know you have a full agenda and this is just one part of it. But I just wanted to some kind of second what Minette said. I'm also a parent of a senior on the volleyball team. We have a great group, about nine seniors playing for the last last time in high school. And I just wanted to kind of show my support as well to possibly see if the, you know, policy could be changed for the spectators for the fall to sports with all, you know, agreeing with all points that had, you know, Minette had said. Hoping that we can maybe with the lower numbers be able to get some of these parent groups in. Also very willing to tape off and do any kind of prep work that might be needed to support that. So I just wanted to, you know, to show my support to hope, you know, to hope maybe that we could discuss a possibility of changing that spectator policy. We're really hoping to just kind of support our kids in a tough time and hoping that we might be able to all come together, support them and, you know, be there present for them in their, you know, their last games of their career. So thank you for for taking the comments and questions and and our emails. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Kelly. Anybody else? Does anybody see anybody that I don't see?
I don't see anybody else.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, thank you. We have your comments and we'll be talking about athletics later on in the agenda. But we'll start first with you, Jim, filling us in on the COVID-19 status, please.
Okay, so good morning. I will start by saying a couple of framework overview of where we are as a district right now. We're in the process of of setting up our pool testing at the high school as well as with staff. Today's the final day for folks to sign up. So we can start organizing high school students as well as staff for participation in the pooling. The other component is over the week, last week. The commissioner talked about middle school students coming back to the into the buildings for a full time person learning beginning on August 20, or August, April 28th. I'm getting my my dates mixed up. I want to report that on Thursday evening, I will be asking the school committee to consent to my recommendation that Ashland Middle School and Ashland High School begin in-person learning on Monday, April 12th. So that's one week after the K through five. I'll have more about that on Thursday, but that will be the recommendation that I propose. And over the weekend, I will be sending an email out to the middle school and high school communities. Looking for the same thing that we looked at with the Warren and the Mindas communities, a commitment as to what type of learning will exist for their child for the remainder of the year, a remote or in person. There will be no hybrid for the remainder of the year, starting on April 12th. So that information will go out. In addition, we'll be sending a survey asking families, parents, if they want to donate time and volunteer some time to our schools. We recognize this is going to be a challenging endeavor, getting all of our students back in. But there are numerous families that have come forth and said, what can we help you with? Whether it's transportation in the afternoon, in the morning, whether it's cafeteria work, helping out, just making sure students stay physically distant in the cafeterias. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And the more we can have you know, volunteers, the better. So there'll be a process for that. Just, I just want to put that out there is that's coming out with the emails this weekend as well. So any questions on that before I share the numbers for the week?
Questions, anybody?
I do. Sorry, my video, I can't get my video camera to work. Sorry.
We can still hear you.
Okay, Jim, so so for the middle school, I know you have said in the past about the space. So you have any initial thoughts you can share?
Sure, yeah. And we can get more into it on Yeah, right. Initially, yes, I mean, we have a number of classrooms that are large or that are a number of classes that have a large enrollment. And so Dave and Mike Morrow's assistant have been going around and Dave and I went on Wednesday, looking at the rooms, trying to make sure that those large class classes are able to fit within the classrooms. But that being said, we also have some other spaces within the facility that can be used, whether it's the gymnasium, whether it's the, I call it the little theater. It's not a little theater. I don't know why I call it that, Dave. It's it's a, what do you call that room up there?
The lecture hall.
The lecture hall. Thank you. And then I'm, I'm willing, obviously, my, I have, my office is in a classroom. I told Dave there are no bookshelves. I will remove everything out of my office and give my willingly give up my office for a teacher to have enough space. So we've got things in motion. So that's, those are the initial plans. Really Kathy, it's lunch, right? Lunch is the biggest stressor, I think we all have.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Seeing nothing further or hearing nothing further, let me share this week's data with everyone. So what you'll notice is there was a tremendous increase this week in number of cases within Ashland in the community and actually within the school system. So yes, I agree with Minette, our numbers have been going down rapidly. But this is not a week that I would say our numbers went down. We actually went up by 18 from the previous week. Our cases per 100,000 increased dramatically. You'll notice when you look down here, the red outlined of the blue are school age positive cases. While we're still seeing a relatively healthy positivity rate of 1.83, and it still puts us in the yellow according to the matrix of the state. We want to be very careful when looking at these numbers. Ed and Audrey here. And what I did was I put for context, because I always think that's important. We have six families within the community that impacted these numbers greatly. Seven adults and 11 students were impacted with these numbers. And what we know is there was a number of situations where a lot of, it was all household transmission. It's not in school transmission, but it was household transmission. And some large families and numbers of folks living in the same environment where they could not quarantine from one another and our number, and they have students within the district and these students. While the adults were positive first, the students were not early on. Obviously, they became positive and that's part of the reason why you'll see our numbers increase from last Saturday to today. Ed, Audrey, do you want to explain any further on that? I didn't want to get into too much detail other than most of these cases were, well, all these cases were household transmission that we know of.
They're all, they all seem to be household spreads from what we're tracing.
So, so Jim, you know, so the six families. Are, are there any correlations to sources there? You know, is it tied to something related to those six families? I mean, otherwise it's six families, but it's six families. And if it's not somehow related, that
Right.
that is a larger community spread than we typically see.
I don't do the tracing. So Ed, I think, Hudra, I'll have you answer that one.
Um, three of those families get together quite often.
Okay, so there's some, the commonality there, okay.
Yeah. And the, and the majority of the kids were, were those three families.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was trying not to, yeah.
You don't even provide detail, but if there's some way to relate them, then it's not just generic community spread, right?
Correct. There is relation.
What's funny too, you know, those three thought they were kind of keeping their own little bubble, you know, and
They were, right?
They were, and it got in.
It penetrated the bubble, that's all.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
COVID bubble.
It was a COVID bubble. So, so again, I'm not looking to change anything with with regard to our learning model next week, stay in the hybrid. Where, you know, our, our numbers of quarantine students are, are still pretty low. And, you know, you know, we're, we're doing a good job. It was, it was another. I think Audrey and her nursing staff was, has had a little lull. Now they remember what it was like back in January. So it's unfortunate.
Jim, can I ask one follow up question?
Sure.
To, I mean, just what was the impact on these cases in terms of quarantines resulting from them? Now you see we have 54 students that are quarantined right now. How much of that was from these, you know, 11, 11 students?
Can I stop sharing? Because I have some private data I want to look at to give you that answer, Mark.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, because I do have it for you. I just, I don't want to share that screen with with folks. And I'm assuming you can't see my screen.
No, we cannot.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I cannot.
Yeah. So of those 54 we have one, two, three, four. It looks like 15. And then we have one, two, three, four, five, 11, 12, 13. 20 that are still travel related. And then a couple of various others for positive tests, not necessarily related to those three families.
Good, thank you.
Yep. And the, it said the staff had to quarantine. I believe those two staff are back now, though. I think they are, there's, there's zero quarantine now with staff. So again, that's, that's where the numbers are this week. And maintain hybrid for next week with the understanding that I will be recommending on Thursday evening that we move forward with full in-person learning for the middle and high school, starting Monday, April 12th, which is the beginning of their new term. And that'll put it, put students in for the last term of the year.
And just to, and I will talk about it on Thursday, but make sure people hear the right messages. It will be limiting hybrid.
Yes, that email was very clear.
Option as well, so people don't take one piece of it and run.
Yeah, they, I mean, I've had 18 people look at the email and it should, it's pretty clear to me, but it's not always clear to folks when they're reading it, so.
And did you say that survey will go out this weekend, Jim?
It'll go out, yeah, hopefully today.
Today, okay.
Yeah, I want to give folks a week.
Great.
Yep.
Jim, what's a, to what degree, particularly with the state now driving so much of this?
Yep.
Are we able to make changes if numbers reverse? I mean, I'm not reading too much into this one week where we had a bubble get pierced, so to speak, and a bunch of people get it, but you know, what's the possibility of numbers going up high enough that you said we can't do it on the 12th? And obviously, the state mandate is really only at this point going to be elementary school for kid five, and then the middle schools a few weeks later.
Right.
But how does that, how does the state guidance drive us? If we see a change in numbers?
Yeah, good question. So the commissioner made it clear on the call and also within his his written guidance to us that even if a community has a high community spread, the expectation is if it's not happening in the schools, that you're in school, full person. So they have sort of moved away from that metric system, if you will, with regard to schools, thinking that it's, you need to focus on what's happening within the buildings. But again, if we go remote, he's also made it pretty clear that those are days you need to make up in terms of structured learning time.
All right, I'll have some other questions, but I'll save it for next Thursday.
Sure, yep.
Hey, Jim, and we can talk more about it on Thursday. Our decision to go with the high school ahead of any state guidance, I assume that doesn't change our options there. So should we go run into that situation? Mark mentioned that you just discussed. And we said, you know what, for the, for that situation, we want to move the high school to remote for a week. That still counts towards our learning time, our time on learning, I assume.
That is correct. At this, at this point, the final decision with regard to high school and expectations has not been relayed by the state, just through the middle school.
Yeah, and so my point is more that if we're choosing to eliminate the hybrid.
We could adjust and not impact us.
It doesn't commit us to losing that option.
That is correct. Yep. Okay.
Anything else on this before we move to policies? Okay, Paul, you want to take it?
Sure. Let's bring up stuff. So, so we'll start with the, let me just find the file here. So I will go to the student COVID travel policy, the red line version. Let me share my screen here. People are able to see that. I'm going to make it a little larger. Everyone able to see this?
Yeah.
So, so the first part doesn't really change at all. It's just kind of the definitions and things like that. We're still essentially asking everyone to fill out the form to notify us as drop travel. But beyond that, it eliminates the need for people to provide any evidence of compliance. And so this essentially aligns with what we're doing with the employee policy. So it make, it just outlines that everyone must follow the the state travel order. And that they are encouraged to go beyond that. And, and you know, as we all know, the the travel order as it relates to the test is you know, questionable at best if you're able to test 72 hours before you return. So instead of, we're just backing off on the requirements that we had before. Saying everyone must follow the, the travel order and encouraging them to get tested when they get back as well. So it eliminates the, the need to both test when you get back and provide us evidence and have the nursing staff follow up on and track those, those cases. So I mean, essentially, it's just for adapting those sections and aligning it with the with the employee policy.
So does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns about that? I mean, my understanding, Paul, too, is that this in part is to just align it with the the other policy? And there's no action being requested on the employee policy today. It's just this one to get it lined up with that.
Correct.
And certainly we'll hear from Ed and Audrey if there are any, any concerns about this. But I'm assuming you guys checked in with them before you made this. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, they're on our, our policies subcommittee meeting.
Excellent. Okay, questions from the committee?
I just have one, Paul. And I feel like I should know this one, but it's sort of slipped in my mind. I thought Desi put out some kind of guidance that our, our policy was based on. That may have been rescinded at this point.
No.
No, okay.
No, we, we, we totally made it up our own.
Okay, I just had this recollection of something coming out. Maybe it wasn't from them, but someone else about the testing and all that. But if you guys have looked at it, that's certainly fine.
I mean, I didn't go back and see if they had introduced anything after, but when we created it, we, we created it based on conversations. And, and I, I took me a little while. My, I racked my brain for a little while looking for the meeting, the, the policy subcommittee meeting where we did it. But then I went back and realized that it was it was really just Jim, Ed Otter and I talking and, and coming up with it. So, so we didn't actually go through the the subcommittee for the creation of it, but we did it with, with the entire school committee. But no, it wasn't based on anyone else's policy.
Are there any other questions or comments? And if not, Paul, I mean, tell me what you're thinking, but I'm thinking you know, we can just vote this amendment. It's not a brand new policy. It's an amendment. And so I don't think it needs two reads, but somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
That, that was our feeling is, you know, so first of all, the, the two read policy is our policy. So it's not something external or it's just something we have as a policy to do, which I think is a, is a good policy. However, this is you know, it's a, it's a significant change to the policy, but it's a relaxation of the policy. So if you're thinking about it from a a warrant perspective for town meeting or something with the four corners, you can make those modifications inside of that timeline, as long as you're not going outside of those four corners. And we were staying within them because we're, we're lessening the burden. And so I, I think we can, we can just vote the vote the policy change, but.
Anyone have any issues with that before we take a vote?
No, I'm just trying, I'm trying to, I was doing a quick search on my phone to see what I'm thinking of that that was out there, but I don't see any need to hold it up. And if I find something, we can take it up later.
Yeah, we can certainly throw it on the agenda for Thursday if, if you come up with something.
I'll take a motion now.
Move to approve the the, I'll call it student travel policy. Well, what's the policy? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the, hold on one second, but the
Did you give it a letter code?
We did, but I, it's not in my, it's not in the file there because at the time we didn't.
On the agenda, I can, I can get it for you.
I'll move, I move to approve the amended COVID travel policy for students as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, Mark?
I.
Kathy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I, for me as well. Thank you. That passes. And so the next item on the agenda, Paul, no action needed there.
Right.
And then E, E, A, A, student transportation.
Yep, one second, I'll bring that up. All right, are people able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I just did the edits here, just kind of cleaning up some grammatical stuff in the, in the, in it. So there's no substantive changes here. This one is just, we said 2.0 miles every other place. So I was correcting that. The, the real change is just this one, one line change. And so the, the purpose of it, if you recall, when we met regarding the return to school over at Warren, Jim had mentioned talking about the bus, bus fee changes. And so where, where, what he was going to recommend is that we prorate for anyone signing up at this point in this, in the year, that we prorate the fee based on the number of days left. And so after that, I, I touched base with them and said, I looked back at the policy. And we have F here, which, which talks about someone who enrolls mid-year. So somebody coming into the district and how we prorate that fee. So I talked to him about addressing this in a generic sense, giving him the ability to, based on someone's circumstances, prorate if they, if they sign up past our deadlines. And you know, that, that, that isn't saying they will get it. It, it says that they can ask for it and, and Jim can grant that. So that way, someone who's just like, wow, it's a lot harder to drive my kid than I thought it was going to be. Let me sign up now. Well, that person should pay full fee. But someone has a job change and they can no longer do it. Someone comes on hard times, whatever the case is. This actually puts in the policy, I believe, something that Jim was doing anyway. In that if, if there was a legitimate reason for someone to have the fee adjusted, he would, he was making that happen anyway. So this just puts in the policy, something that formally allows that to occur and allows him to then via this modification, address what he was going to ask us to do for, for the change in our, our learning model. So that, that's, that's the only substantive change to this policy is just adding that provision that gives him or his designee, in this case, probably Aaron, the ability to, to make that call and allow people to get a prorated fee.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that? Comments?
I just have one, Paul. Thanks for spending the time on it and try to sort through it. So I agree with the concept. I have a problem addressing it. The only thing that concerns me, it certainly isn't for the remainder of this year, if this we're looking at, generally even for the future, but I I'm a little concerned that If this we're looking at generally even for the future, but I I'm a little concerned that um by just simply stating that the superintendent or or his designee um can weave it without some sort of standard attached to it, makes it may make it more difficult because everybody can come in and just say, oh, I missed the, I missed the deadline or something like that, or I changed my mind. Um, I'm just wondering whether it makes sense to put something in there, you know, sort of uh for good cause upon unforeseeable circumstances, you know, some sort of of um carve out on that that and it's not about restricting Jim's discretion or Aaron's as much as it is the expectation set with the reader um about, hey, look, this is not just going to be a um an oops or, you know, hey, just go ask and it probably granted. I think what you're aiming for is something that, you know, upon reasonable circumstances that were not foreseeable to the person earlier on or beyond their control, this would be applicable or or available. Um, so I I'm just curious, what your thoughts are on that idea?
Yeah, and I I know I I I know exactly where you're, because I was trying to figure out whether I go that route to try to somehow put parameters on it in some way.
Yeah.
Um, and so, but I didn't want to, you know, limit Jim's discretion either, right? So how do you do it where it's like, well, they could have foreseen that they were changing jobs, but they didn't at the time. So uh what, so the way I addressed it and we can, we can change it is that the first statement says they are responsible for it, you know, and says, okay, listen, the expect this sets the expectation is your, the full fee is what you're responsible for. And then, and so it, you know, and and I'm happy to change it. I I just didn't know how to phrase it in a way that didn't limit Jim. Um, and I didn't at least get from him that he was concerned about using his discretion and telling people no.
Yeah, I I just didn't want to create a situation where it's to say no to a lot of people or more people. So I wonder if if Jim could weigh in and sort of the types of scenarios that um come up, you know, that that he's dealing with and sort of how do you look at this particular issue, Jim?
So a couple of things. One, when Paul and I were talking, Kathy talking about the policy itself, there are times throughout the year where, again, unforeseen, someone loses a job. Um, and or they come into our district, they're moving into the district. Uh, you know, we typically look at some of the uh, you know, financial statements, uh, if you will, I'm not not someone's personal, they they have to provide proof that they're on unemployment or some other uh reduction in their their fee, their income. So we look at those types of things, but for me, it's about these families that are coming in that we should be prorating and they're they're not responsible. Uh, two, the unforeseen, families lose their jobs, uh, it happens. Uh, and while they've paid their fee upfront, we we could we could consider prorating it and reimbursing them part of it. Um, you know, so that concept of every every dollar really matters to some of these families, it really does. Um, so i- it was just sort of addressing that ability for us to look at a situation. It doesn't happen a lot. I'll tell you that, but um, you know, obviously, we're gonna get, you know, maybe another couple hundred folks signing up for the buses right now um for COVID, uh since we're going full person. And we need to have a structure there too.
Yes, so so Jim, but uh to Mark's point, I think is, forget this year, right?
Yeah.
Going going forward, phrasing it like this, do you feel it's gonna put it on? It it's gonna create more work for you for you or, you know, and like I said, my fear was I didn't want to try to limit your discretion. So where do you fall on on that balance of putting something in there different? That's that says, here are the thematic reasons you might grant it. Um, or or leaving it uh kind of more broad.
Yeah, I just jumped in before um before you said, so what I'm thinking about might be taking that second sentence where it says, however, at the discretion of just make it, however, at the discretion of superintendent or designee for unforeseen circumstances, the transportation fee may be reduced. You know, it would be to introducing a clause like that.
Sure.
That I'm thinking about, just if it helps your thought.
I got, no, yeah, I think that frames it nicely and it still doesn't change the the whole notion. I mean, I, that unforeseen is really determinable by me at the end, right? So I don't see that, it's not, it doesn't happen often to begin with. So I'm good with that.
So I'd I'd propose that we include that that phrase um as I just read it.
Yeah, no, yes. That's however, at the discretion of superintendent or designee, um, you know, for uh
Maybe it's the transportation fee. The transportation fee for unforeseen circumstances, maybe, maybe you stick it after that.
Yeah, the transportation fee for uh due to unforeseen uh circumstances, yeah, okay.
Perfect. Yep, good with that.
Thank you.
That sounds good.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
So does anybody have a motion to uh and and I'm fine with it as well. I'm not, I I think it's it's to Mark's point, it's the messaging. I'm not sure if it limits the amount of requests that are going to come into Jim. He's going to be the one that's determining what's foreseen or unforeseen. But certainly, um, you know, it it gives pause for people to think about their circumstances perhaps before they ask. So does somebody have a uh a motion to uh accept the the new language as amended?
Well, could you scroll back up to the top to just get the policy name right and the motion?
Sure.
So I'll make a motion to approve the student transportation policy file E E A A. As amended.
I'll second for that. So you, Paul?
Yep.
And all in favor, Paul?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
An I for me, and that passes. Thank you. Uh, next up, I think, are we at athletics?
That is correct.
Okay, um, so and Steven, are you here?
I am, yeah. Can you guys hear me? I'm having some issues with my computer.
Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect.
And uh, you know, uh, we'll take your report, whatever you want to fill us in on. And uh you may be aware too that we received multiple letters about the uh spectators for indoor in particular volleyball. So I'm not sure if you have any thoughts on this yet, or if you've had a chance to connect with Kelly and Jim and Ed and Audrey on this, but anyhow, just wanted to put that out there. If you're ready to talk about it, if not, we can do it on Thursday.
Yeah, no, certainly. So first of all, the the first couple of weeks have gone great. Um, in terms of this, it's been a little bit different with uh you know, both indoor and outdoor sports going on, but um everything's been been very smooth. So um with that being said, I wanted to get through one home game last night of volleyball before I wanted to see what the setup looked like and felt like um with a game going on in our facility. Um, and my recommendation would be to move forward with um two adult spectators per player, just like we do outdoors um for indoor sports, which would be volleyball and swimming with the caveat of it's facility dependent because we are renting facilities for swimming. So it's not our facility. So um I'm comfortable with that. If the committee is comfortable voting on it or talking about it today, if not, we can move it to to next week, but that is my recommendation.
Okay, I'll open that up for discussion. Then you've all seen the request, you've heard Steven's input, and so this is the time. Mark, if you're talking, you're on mute.
Yep, got it. Um, I'm just interested in in where Ed and Audrey come out on that.
Yeah, I I'm good with it, um, but I'm gonna call Manette out and tell her she's gonna help me with any contact tracing. Haha.
She's volunteered, didn't she?
I just heard my name. What do you need from me?
I said, I said, if I, if we approve this, you're gonna help me if there's any contact tracing. Haha.
I would be happy to help you, Ed, and and I also, I will help you guys. Seriously, I was gonna call Audrey. I'll help you guys. I'm in charge of the pool testing in our district. I'm happy to have a conversation with you about how that's gone and what we've learned. So please, let's help each other.
That would be awesome.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
I will, I will email you, Manette, over the weekend. Yep.
Thanks. Appreciate that. So Mark, that was Mark's question. Other others, comments?
So so Steven, uh I assume the uh you're gonna run it the same way you did uh for the other ones where they're actually gonna have identification or 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 whatever you've been doing in the past. I forgot how you uh described it, but.
Yeah, I've already uh ordered and I have them ready. We have spectator badges um that we give two to each player and they can give them to adults and then they sign in with a QR code when they get there.
Okay, and 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 you'll be uh present to make sure everyone's following all the all the protocols and rules, right?
Yeah, myself and I'll hire some additional staff.
And 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 just for the for everyone who sent the 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 letters, you know, so uh Steven's obviously the the first point of contact and we're gonna, you know, take our cues from from him, even if we thought it was okay and the the best thing in the world to add spectators, it's something that obviously uh Steven has to uh operate and and implement. So uh it it would, he's 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 the focal point for for the those communications in general.
Yeah, and I know like some of the concern in the past, well, of course, some of these decisions were um, we were advised and also we made the decisions during times when there was a big uptick in COVID and things were a little bit different. And we certainly have others in the building that we want to make sure that we're looking out for their safety. But uh it's it's great that things are moving in the right direction. But um I think it goes without saying, if at any point, you know, Steven felt that it was unmanageable or the contact tracing started to become a problem for Ed and Audrey, then just like anything that we've been doing all along, we'd have to reevaluate. But but right now, it doesn't seem like there's any reason not to to allow it. Does anybody else, any concerns or comments about it?
I mean, I'll I'll just um say this, I mean, I I'm I think I'm one of probably the more conservative, at least looking forward on on these things. And and I certainly appreciate, I've got kids who play sports that I didn't get to watch except on TV last session, so you know, I know it stinks. Um, and I certainly appreciate the desire particularly for parents of seniors that, you know, it's kind of a last opportunity to be a part of that. Um, you know, I'll say generally speaking, I'm I am I'm concerned about sort of the pace that we're moving, not because of what we're doing, but because of what the state's pushing. Um, but I also look at this and say, you know, we're we're bringing kids back within three feet of each other, four feet, five feet of each other um in much more confined spaces than our gym. And it just, it doesn't make sense to sort of force that issue. Um, whether it be by our choice or by state coercion, um and not allow this. So um because our gym certainly is is quite large, um and you're talking about fifteen or thirty people in a space that's, you know, five times the size of one of our classrooms, just in the bleacher area near the the volleyball court setup. Um, so, you know, I'm I'm wary about, you know, all these things that we do that aren't sort of critical. But I think this one is on there and it really isn't a reason not to do it, you apply some common sense to it.
Hey, Steven, just uh just a quick question. Uh, do the JV and varsity play at the same time in the gym?
They do not. No, we have staggered them.
So so it's only half of the gym and the other half isn't isn't being used at the same time? So so really talking about only about thirty, adding thirty people to uh to the space and not sixty?
Right, exactly. So it'd be thirty at most. And just for, you know, clarity purposes, I want to remind everyone that this is for home games only. So the the league has a policy, um regardless of what the state's policy is, that it's only home spectators. Um, and then the second piece to that is, um, you know, I I will have additional event staff there, but all the spectators must wear masks covering their face and nose the entire time and social distance in the in the stand. So we'll have markings on the on the benches, but that's the expectation.
Right, and I assume that, I mean, I can't, I can't imagine this happening, but if people were not respectful of the rules, they would need to leave.
Yes, exactly.
Just, sorry, go, Paul.
Uh, that's all right, Mike. Um, just and and probably get into too many details, but the is your plan would be to have those uh thirty on the Ashland side? Uh, just out of respect for the visiting team, that we're not sticking thirty people right behind their bench?
We we actually can't, it has to be on the opposite side because um by rules, they need to be, any spectator needs to be twenty feet away from the players at minimum. We don't have enough room on that backside, so they'll be across.
Even just, this is really not directly related to the volleyball thing, but it's um something I observed watching the ninth grade um boys' basketball teams TV. Um, there seemed to be, well, you know, sort of the kids who are on the team seem to be following the rules. You could see it's a number of times where other kids were congregating either because they were the next one in for the gym for a game afterwards or something like that. And I just asked that folks keep an eye on those kids who are hanging by the doors as people typically do. Um, sort of watching when they're really supposed to be spread out a little bit more than that.
Yeah, certainly, and it'll help to uh, once I have extra event staff there with with fans, it'll help to have some extra bodies. Yep.
Anything else on that?
I'm assuming you you're gonna try to keep the doors open too for the airflow since.
Yeah, as best you can.
As best you can, yeah. Um, and then Steven, you mentioned hiring extra staff, like do you have that in your budget? Or are you talking like they're vol- they're volunteering or?
Well, I'd love volunteers, but I do have that in my budget, yeah, for event staff.
Okay.
Anything else? Do we need to vote on that or is that just consensus?
I don't know if we need a vote. I mean, I'd leave that up to you guys, but in my presentation, um, I did say with the ability to, with the flexibility to revisit it, um, as it went along, but if you need a vote.
It's one of those things where we voted it before, but it doesn't matter to me either. Um, just just Mark, uh, just uh, sorry, uh, Steven, one one last thing, just if we can also be cognizant of where we place fans relative to WACA staff. Um, I I, you know, tertiaryly heard from someone that at other events, there had been times where the the fans got, you know, either too close to them or just, you know, relative to their spacing as well. Just uh, just throwing that out there.
Yep.
Anybody else? And anything else, Steven, to add on the athletic update? Is that it?
No, that's it, but thank you guys very much.
Sure, thank you. So we ready to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, Kathy?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
An I for me. Thank you all very much. Have a.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And we'll see you next week.
Bye bye.